If I could, I would call to order the special meeting for the Milton Board of Education for Tuesday, May 26. And customarily, we will start, we don't have a pledge on there. Can we start with a pledge?
It's not.
No, I guess if you didn't put it on my agenda, I can't do it. Which puts us up to action on the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Diamond?
No changes to the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve our agenda as you have it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Action on the vouchers is next.
I'll make a motion to approve Fund 10 vouchers totaling $913,422 and $2 cents, and Building Fund 49 vouchers totaling $1,457,486 and $0.65 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, and seconded by Rick, to approve the vouchers, as you just heard. Are there any questions on the vouchers? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? The vouchers are approved. Update from Mr. Diamond. On planning for the 2020-2021 school year, considerations for reopening.
Yeah, I'm going to share some information with the board on this topic, and Carrie Clubbey is also going to share some information. There is a document that's enclosed in your board packet titled "Update on 2021 School Year Planning." And it's really sharing out some information on both for this coming summer and for the start of the 2021 school year this fall. What are some considerations that we're taking in place around reopening and bringing students and staff back into our schools in a safe manner? Really, the student and staff health and safety has to be our top priority at this time. We want to make sure that we ensure and maintain a safe environment that's conducive to learning for everyone. And we've gotten some directives from the CDC, from Rock County Health Authorities, from the State Department of Public Instruction, and Department of Health Services have been working together. And what we laid out in this document are some key considerations for reopening. And in a second, I'll have Carrie Clubbey kind of walk through those considerations. One more thing that I'd like to share, and then we'll open it up to any questions that board members have too, after Carrie shares her piece of this, is that we are still waiting for a little bit more information from DPI and DHS. On a webinar today, DPI representatives shared that they're putting together a roadmap for schools, and it is just recommendations. So school districts will have decision-making ability on what that looks like in the fall and for summer school, but some recommendations and a roadmap on things to be considering and some recommendations that they make. So I'll turn things over to Carrie and let her kind of walk through those key considerations for reopening.
Hi, everybody. So as a district, there really are a couple of line items we put together in a memo for you, but just know that everything really boils down to the direction that we ultimately will receive from the CDC, from the local health authorities, and from DPI. The items that are on our list, we will also have to make sure we are incorporating our community partners in these discussions. We already have been in discussions, as Rich had mentioned, with City of Milton, the local health departments. But we also have to take into consideration, when it comes to reopening, the opinions of Go Right Way, the insurance company. A lot of our district vendors will also need to be on board. First and foremost, all the local health officials, Rock County Health Department, were very specific that social distancing is everything. We need to make sure that if we do reopen our schools, we can take into consideration appropriate social distancing. We also have to recognize that the needs of 4K would differ from the needs of a high school, or it will be a lot easier for social distancing, perhaps with some of our older students than with our younger. So we are going to have to work together to figure out how to best provide for that spacing with our younger students. We already have a phenomenal Buildings and Grounds team that's been going above and beyond all year, especially with a very active flu season, to take on those extra disinfecting tasks. But now with reopening, we have to redouble our efforts. On top of that, we need to consider our use of community products and community spaces. For instance, we should probably close down drinking fountains, but also eliminate things in those younger school scenarios, like shared paints or shared crayons, as we understand that those could carry some viruses on them. We also want to work with our district nurses and health aides on best practices for symptom screening. Anybody who's been going out and about, you'll see some businesses are now instituting temperature checks upon entry or symptom checks. Those are things that we need to talk with our health aides about. Can we take that on as a district? And how do we take those on as a district? We were doing it during cold and flu season. We'll continue to have to reinforce the proper hygiene and best practices to prevent the spread of viruses. And we also need to remind all staff and district families that if you are sick, if you are symptomatic, you need to stay home. Hold on, I'm so sorry. We need to consider how we're going to handle requests from outside entities for use of our facilities, and this is something that's pressing now with our summer season. How do we handle rental requests for Schilberg Park or the gymnasium? In any and all considerations, too, with the upcoming school year, we would need to consider that there's a potential that we will have to, well, there's going to potentially be purchases made. So there are financial considerations we need to take into any and all planning for reopening. When I'm thinking of financial obligations, though, I'm thinking, will we need to require PPE? What equipment might we have to take on to ensure social distancing? Our next steps are just continuing conversations at this point, because the guidelines are there, and we can work within them, but we also want to make sure that we, as a school community, so I mean, we, the School District of Milton, but then also our neighboring districts, are on the same page with reopening, that there's consistency among the schools on how we are going to get these kids back in the classroom.
Thank you for walking through those items, Carrie. A couple additional things that I want to add. Carrie talked at the end about neighboring districts. And while there isn't any type of requirement that regional groups of districts have similar or the same plan in place, there is some value in making sure that we're having conversations with some of our neighbors. So other school districts in Rock County are communicating together about what those plans are going to look like or could look like, and we want to have some consistency with our neighbors in some ways, but also make sure that the plan that we put in place works for us with the School District of Milton. So it really comes down to following those guidelines from the CDC and from the State Department of Health and State Public Instruction. We will be bringing something, a recommendation, to the board at our next meeting in June for the board to be considering. And really, the legal status right now changed when the Supreme Court ruled. They left in place the restriction that schools are to remain closed for people instruction and for extracurricular activities through the end of June. But some of the other pieces, like whether we are allowing our facilities to be used for outside groups, are left now as a local decision, as long as you're following the guidelines of your local health department, which for us would be the Rock County Public Health, and also staying in contact with our insurance agent and with our legal representatives to make sure that we're making every effort to promote a safe return, both for our students and staff and for the use of our facilities. So questions or comments, thoughts from board members?
Rich, for PPE items, I know the answer probably doesn't exist yet, but will there be enough information for the June meeting for us to potentially put a budget number and start to acquire those PPE supplies if needed, since a lot of them are hard to attain right now, and June isn't that far off from, conceivably, the start of the school year? Do you think the DPI will have enough guidance for us to look at those things, or is that still too soon to tell?
No, I think that they will. I think they will get something, what they're calling it as a roadmap. I think that we'll get their roadmap, hopefully by the end of this week, but I think for sure in time for that first June meeting. And we've been monitoring, Steven Shuntz is kind of monitoring different vendors that provide masks, face shields, gloves, and that type of thing. And we're feeling pretty confident about our ability to get things ordered and get them here in time for the start of the school year. There are some different groups that are, CISA is doing some large group purchases, so that's one option for us, if that's a path that we want to go. But Steven Shuntz is regularly in contact with the different vendors that provide those items, too. We do have some things on hand that we're continuing to use for meal preparation, meal distribution, and items like that, but we will need to get more before the start of the school year. The financial side of it, we do have some different options. We will be getting, from the CARES Act that the federal government approved back in March, we will be getting access to some funds through the CARES Act. And one of the allowable expenses to use those funds for are to help ensure the health and safety of your students and staff. So we wouldn't have to look at necessarily building that into our regular budget, again, depending on how much those costs are. And we still haven't gotten a final dollar amount on the CARES Act funding, but I think it definitely would be enough to pay for our protective equipment needs for the coming year.
I have a staffing question. Do we currently have a district nurse? Or is Erin still with us?
Erin has resigned her position. I think it was a couple meetings ago that the board approved that. We've contracted with an outside agency to provide our school nurse services for the coming school year, and I'm not certain on the start date with them. We've had some discussions with them. And Erin has been doing some part-time work for us over the last month or so, but we will, at the start of the school year, have that contract in place with the outside service.
I've got an additional thought or question, I guess, Rich. It kind of mirrors Dave's thought process there. As Carrie was outlining for us, one of the focal points, of course, is cleanliness, sanitation, disinfection, and the heightened awareness of all that. Do we feel like we've got enough people in our Buildings and Grounds world or the personnel that we're going to need? I know folks stepped up in an extraordinary timeframe with the flu season that we had, and that was right on the front side of the COVID element that unfolded here. It sounds to me like through the fall, and I don't know how far into the future, that we'll have needs for kind of cleaning to a higher level than maybe what we typically would do. So should we be looking at additional personnel resources in that department?
We've had some preliminary discussions there, too, and a lot of that is dependent on what the expectations are for the frequency of cleaning. And our staff does a great job every evening to get the school ready for the next day. If there is a requirement built into our plan that multiple times throughout the day a room will be disinfected, then it's going to up the need. We'll build into the proposal that we bring to the board and the recommendation that we bring to the board at that June meeting, if we do think that there is a need for additional staffing, to make sure that we're keeping up with the cleaning.
I have two questions. My first one is, are we taking advantage of some of the programs right now that are giving PPE to schools? Like, I know on Friday, you could pick up like thousands of PPE per school district at the Pfizer Forum in Milwaukee, if you signed up for that. Is that stuff that we're participating in?
I hadn't heard of that one, but we will keep our eyes open for opportunities like that. And if anyone does hear of opportunities like that, let us know, too. But, and I don't know if we have anything coming up, if there are other opportunities like that coming up, but I know that there have been a lot of businesses that have been looking for ways to give back to the community. So if we have opportunities like that, we'll definitely take advantage of them.
And then my second question is, along with, you know, getting prepared for cleaning and things like that, and we said it impacts, you know, 4K differently than high school, but in terms of like PD for staff, in terms of curriculum, I mean, like so much of our curriculum is group learning and space, let alone, you know, how that impacts teachers and students on how they learn or how you can teach. Have we started looking at like what that looks like with the restrictions? Because I know I've been in every school, and every school has classrooms that are tight before you even put kids into group work or, you know, different types of learning environments.
Yeah. What instruction will look like is something that we've definitely been working on. We've learned some things from our virtual learning so far this spring, some things that have gone really well that we want to make sure we continue, and other things that we've learned that we can tweak and make them better for this fall. There really are three different kind of big-picture options for what our schools will look like in the fall. One option is that we are able to safely bring all of our students back at the same time and have regular school, if you will, with the safety precautions, with social distancing, but bring everyone in. Another option is that, in order to have the required social distancing, we might need to bring smaller groups of students back at a time. I know some places are opening at 25% of capacity or 50% of capacity, maybe like an AB system, where students in Group A come on Monday, Wednesday, Friday that week, and students in Group B come to school on Tuesday and Thursday, so that we only have half as many students, we're able to spread them out in the classroom, and then we provide kind of a hybrid onsite and virtual education for students. And the third option is if we aren't able to bring even small groups of students in at the time, and we have to pick up in the fall in a virtual manner, similar to what we're doing right now. And a lot of that depends on what happens with the pandemic and what if there's, when the first wave ends, and if there is a second wave between now and then, some situations might change, and we need to be ready to adapt to any of those possibilities. So we do have a couple groups that have been working both on long-term planning and short-term planning, and one of the considerations of that long-term planning group is, how do we continue to meet the academic needs for all students? Because we know that some students learn well remotely, and other students need that more face-to-face atmosphere. And how do we make sure we're meeting the social and emotional needs of all of our students? Because that need has changed and has increased based on the situation that we're in. But we have done, we've done some work this spring. We plan on continuing to do some professional development with staff on both providing virtual learning opportunities for students and how to change our instruction if we are bringing back smaller groups and students are only in our schools on an alternating basis.
So, since we're kind of talking about fall and possible virtual classes and everything, one thing that I think is probably important, it kind of goes back to the budget piece as well, I think that the staff has done an incredible job with the virtual learning and setting up lesson plans and all that, as spare moment, really, last minute. And like you said, Rich, you know, obviously, there were some best practices that we've done so far, and there's some opportunities where we can improve. And I think the one place that our district is probably falling behind everybody else is a lot, and I've gotten this from several different parents, is a lot of our classes don't show a virtual class instruction-type, like our session. It's all, well, I shouldn't say all, a lot of our virtual learning is an email, here's the word you're supposed to read and stuff. And I think what we need to do is really look towards being able to have the technology and it probably have to bump up our bandwidth so that all the teachers can have a virtual class session where they're actually doing class instruction, and the students can actually watch them as they give that class instruction on a daily basis. So that's just one of those things that I've heard from the community, and I hope that we can, I know other districts are doing it, and I hope we can kind of catch up with that. And like I said, I know it's going to be an IT consideration, because we'll probably have to have more bandwidth, but I think that's something we might want to start thinking about now, because if we do want to do that, then we probably have to get some more IT equipment.
Yep. Thank you for your thoughts on that, and that's something that we'll continue to look into, too.
I have a question that piggybacks, I believe, on what Diamond was asking. Has there been any investigation into some of the older buildings, like East and West I'm thinking of, as far as if it's even possible to social distance, let's say, 24 second graders? I spent 20 years of my life in one of those rooms, and I can't imagine having 24 second graders that are actually six feet apart from each other. I mean, I guess what I'm asking is if the room is even physically big enough to do that.
The size of our, Mike's point about the size of our classrooms is a valid point. We do, especially in our older building, it's a tight squeeze when we're not worried about keeping people six feet apart. So putting that in place will be a struggle for us, and that might lead to our need to bring students in in smaller groups or some type of a rotation system initially in the fall. And again, a lot of that is dependent on what those recommendations look like from the CDC and from DHS. We're, right now, as we're getting close to the end of May, we're about three months away from getting ready to bring students back into our buildings for the start of the school year, and there obviously can be a lot that changes between now and then, and the status of the pandemic and the status of the recommendations. But if we had to bring students back right now and keep classrooms socially distant, we would have to have students in shifts if we were doing it right now.
Okay. Thanks.
One other thing that I wanted to bring up, it was kind of hit on, not directly, less than directly, is the budget piece, too. Another big piece, and we've talked about this at a previous board meeting, but I want to reinforce that at the state level, they're seeing a significant economic downturn and are continuing to let us know that we should be preparing multiple scenarios for budgeting for the coming year. And obviously, the last action that the state legislature took on this was in the last biennium, when they approved $300 per student for the coming fiscal year. We're receiving pretty regularly indications that we should not assume that that's going to be coming, and we've thought about that as the best-case scenario for revenue for next year. But we've also talked about and been planning what our budgeting would need to look like if we didn't get any of that $300 per student, or if there is a decrease to our per pupil revenue for next year. So that point's an important piece in our planning moving forward, not just in our preparation for making sure that we can bring our students and staff back safely, but for all of our budget decisions. We've made some decisions already to put some things on pause, but I just want to reinforce with the board that we are continuing, although the legislature hasn't acted yet, we're continuing to hear that we should be prepared for either a status quo of our revenue, this year's revenue carrying over the next year, or even a potential decrease from this year's revenue to next year.
Any other questions for Rich or any other staff on the update? If not, we will move on. Item three on the agenda is the HR midi report. I believe we met last week, and Diamond, with help of probably Chris and Rich, will give us an update on what we did there.
Yeah, so you will see with your first attachment, Chris kind of does this every year, a highlight of the projects that we've worked on, or he and his team has worked on in the HR department. The last year has been incredibly busy, as all of us kind of have experienced with the new members. In the very beginning, we started off the year, and I won't read all of it, but kind of touch on a few things, and if there's something really that jumps out at you, Chris, if I miss, please feel free to add in. We started off the year with hiring Rich as our interim, one-year superintendent, the Director of Technology and Innovation, Ryan Kurlis. From there, we worked on getting job descriptions out for our business manager and new communications team member, and getting those hired. We were working on moving into a single provider for our health insurance, and we were doing that with our advisory group. We had a lot of meetings there. We hired our communications person, our outreach person. We hired our business manager. We revamped our superintendent evaluations. We got that out. And then kind of the pandemic hit, and we were working on a lot of projects. Things are kind of put on hold or working on a little slowly while we've navigated through these times here recently, and continue to look forward to working on the handbook, on getting things aligned, and continuing, just making things easier and better for both the staff and the department. Chris, how was that for a recap?
Awesome. I have nothing to add.
Does anyone have any questions on kind of what we've worked on this year, or kind of forward-thinking? With hearing none, we can move on. Our next agenda item is the staff survey on Dean, the near-site or onsite clinic options. So Chris and his team have been working to put together a brief survey, seven questions, kind of getting what people are looking for, expecting out of what this onsite or near-site model will look like. We want to make sure that we're hearing the staff and getting their input. So we're going to put this survey out and give the staff a generous amount of time to respond to it. We know we're going into summer. We know that people are finishing up on all of this virtual learning stuff, that people are very busy, that we don't want to set too small of a parameter there. So as staff have time, they can access this survey and get it back to the Human Resources Department, and then we can use that to go back to the advisory group to really start fine-tuning what our expectations are when we go back into meetings with Dean here come August. Chris, anything to add?
Nope. Other than we will be looking this coming fall to have more benefits advisory group meetings that will be around this process as we work towards that near or onsite clinic.
And I know Chris already has a meeting scheduled with the, you know, with the needed people at Dean to make sure we get this moving on schedule like we had planned when we started these conversations. So anyone wondering, we're still on track with that. We're on plan. That meeting is scheduled, and we are moving forward pretty much on our target points like we were hoping for. And getting the business, or not the business, that getting the advisory group, the benefits advisory group back together with it in the fall will really help keep us on that tight timeline and making sure we're addressing all of those needs as indicated in our survey moving forward. Any questions? Hearing none. Mr. President, that concludes HR Committee.
Thank you very much. Excellent summary. Moving on, new business. First up is discussion and possible action on attendance area boundaries. And I believe Rich is going to lead that.
Yeah, I will. I'll share some information, and then we're going to hear from Ms. Kramer and Ms. Schwengels are going to share some information about this process. There are included in your, in board docs are four different items, two separate memos, and I'll share in a minute why there are two separate memos. There also is an attendance area boundaries map and administrative guidelines, 5120, that goes with. There also is an attendance area boundaries map and a administrative guidelines, uh, 5120 that goes with policy uh, 5120. And I'll detail uh, each of those uh, in a minute. Before I start into the details, I want to share a little bit of the background. Our policy 5120 um, details that the, the district administrator should review existing attendance areas on an annual basis and bring forward any recommended changes to the board. Uh, and that the board would then uh, need to approve changes to attendance areas. Uh, and we are uh, proposing some changes to our attendance areas. And really our attendance areas only come into play for our 4K through third grade schools. Since after third grade, uh, we just have one school that all of our students in the district attend. The reason that there's two memos is that the, the first memo that we're going to look at is the one that's, that's labeled as information. And then there's a separate one that's labeled as action. Uh, the action memo is specific to the board, the requirement in our policy that the board approve uh, the attendance areas. So it's asking the board to give their stamp of approval to really what's laid out in the map that's attached. That students that live in the, the one attendance area are going to attend West. Uh, the same for East and Consolidated and Harmony. Uh, the administrative guideline that, that I'll detail is, has more of the information that's in the, the information memo. And I'm going to start then if, if people want to open up that um, memo that's labeled as the information memo. And I'll highlight some things from that and then I'll turn things over to uh, to Marsha and Jen to share some of the, the background information that, that went into this process. Uh, again, a board policy 5120 details that the board uh, sets those attendance area uh, boundaries and that the district administrator brings a recommendation to the board. Uh, we are again recommending some changes. Um, it started as a discussion on um, some challenges uh, at our schools uh, because of the transportation system. Our current system has 18 shuttle buses uh, that run daily uh, between East and West and Harmony. Uh, both at the start of the school day and at the end of the school day. Um, and there's some definite downsides to uh, that system being in place. The updated plan uh, removes the need for most of those shuttles and supports a much more consistent, safe and efficient uh, system. Um, throughout the years uh, with the school district of Milton, placement procedures have been inconsistent in the, in the way that uh, parameters used to assign students to their respective buildings, whether it's at uh, East, West, Consolidated or Harmony. Uh, some factors that were taken into consideration included balancing class sizes, uh, proximity to the home address, transportation and other unique factors. But it resulted in some inefficiencies in transportation routing, including longer bus rides uh, for many students. Uh, the map that's included uh, lists the, the uh, boundaries, the recommended boundaries that we're bringing to the board. Uh, you can open up that map if it, if it comes in in a small size, you can use the, the uh, in, to increase this, the buttons to either zoom in or zoom out. Um, but you can see in blue in the diagram, uh, the attendance area for West, Milton West Elementary. Uh, in green for Consolidated, in pink uh, for Harmony and in yellow for Milton East. And that map basically and those boundaries are what we're going to be asking the board uh, for their approval. Uh, but as I mentioned earlier, in addition to modifying and clarifying those attendance boundaries, uh, we've developed, and this was in conjunction with the elementary principals and Susan Probst and Carrie Bradley. Uh, that a administrative guideline 5120 has been developed. And um, while I won't read through the entire administrative guideline, there are some very strong uh, positive outcomes from the changes that are detailed there. It, one of the biggest is that it would decrease the number of transfers that we needed at the beginning and at the end of the day. Um, having fewer transfers increases safety for students. The fewer times they're getting on a bus and, and getting off uh, at, at the new location. It lowers anxiety for students, staff and families. Uh, with our transfers, we had students who were uh, frequently late for class and missed some instructional time. So by eliminating those transfers, uh, it would increase our instructional minutes. Our families that live in an attendance area will be able to attend their respective schools and our principals can share a little bit more on that. We're anticipating that it would decrease the, the bus ride for many students by 10 to 15 minutes. Uh, supports an effective and efficient class size balancing for student learning. Uh, it also makes our bus system as a whole, uh, our routing system more efficient. And we're anticipating being able to reduce anywhere from two to four uh, bus routes uh, for next year because of these changes. And gives families a predictable schools of attendance based on their primary residence. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to, to Marsha and Jen and let them uh, share a little bit more of the specific details about the, the steps that have taken place.
Okay. Before we get started, I'm going to just say that Rich did a nice job of explaining many of the things that um, Marsha and I were going to hit on. Um, but I'm going to back it up just a little bit because I think it's very important for um, our families and staff to understand kind of our journey in coming to this decision. And it started even back um, in some of our discussions this school year about bringing 4K um, back into our school buildings. And so during that process, it was going to change the way we looked at placing of 4K. In the past, we only had small wonders as an option in Milton West. But now because we've moved them into the schools, that there's three options. So as Mrs. Schwengels and I sat down and started looking at uh, placements of those 4K students in proximity to where they live, what we noticed is there's a lot of discrepancies where there'd be a sibling who lived, let's just say on the west side of town, who is actually attending Milton East. So why wouldn't we place the 4K student over at West, which is close to their uh, primary residence? Thank you, Marsha. Um, so we saw a lot of difference in uh, placements. So then at that time, we started asking the questions as Rich had noted earlier. Um, why would those students placed there? And it came down to things such as childcare. Um, it could be uh, that the people had moved during their K3 experience. So yep, I did live, live over on the east side of town, but our family bought a house on the west and we didn't want to transition schools at that time. That could have been a reason. We um, also had open enrollment students attending a variety of our schools, which makes sense. And then um, sometimes it came down to the convenience for parents in regards to where they might be working. And so having said all of that, you know, placement was getting to be tricky as we sat down and looked at the incoming 4K as well as our K1, 2 and 3 students. Um, so then at that time, Marsha and I had um, sat down then and contacted the bus company to try to look for some ways that we could uh, fix this problem, meaning we had kids scattered all over. And in that process, we learned.
Even a little bit before that piece, we um, we looked at, I wonder if.
Yep, I got it.
Thanks. Um, we also then at that point, prior to that, we thought about some of the other um, issues that we have during a school day and wondered if that was related to some of these students living all, all over the district. Um, but some of those being the loss of instructional minutes due to being tardy to school with um, transfers happening all over the place. Um, the lengthy bus rides for some of our littlest kids, they're on the bus for quite a long time. And um, especially in that first month of school, the high anxiety that children have um, and parents and families knowing that their child has to transfer um, buses, sometimes twice. And that causes a lot of anxiety for um, the student, the family and the staff to make sure we don't lose anybody in that shuffle. Um, after we reached out to Go Right Way, um, I sat down with them to try to figure out a bunch of different options. What can we do differently to come up with a much more efficient system for our busing and for our students and what's going to be good for kids ultimately? So we took a look at actually attendance zones. And if you live in this zone, then you would be bussed from this zone. Um, and that, that goal was to come up with a better system um, to get our kids to and from school. During that process, um, we were able to come up with an answer that would have fewer transfers. It would increase our instructional minutes, it would decrease the average length of time that the students would be on the bus. Um, and know that um, as I worked with Go Right Way, we did a number of um, different options. Because of course, the most efficient isn't necessarily going to have the least impact on the district. And but, so we reworked some efficiencies to try to have the least impact on the number of students who would be affected by this as well too. So we have um, come up with a plan including that um, leads to this attendance zone area. Um, that balanced efficiency with the least number of students and families affected. Jen or Rich, anything else that you think needs to be added to that?
I think in, in looking at the, the, the plan uh, for the coming year based on the administrative guideline, we do know that it will, as, as was mentioned, it will affect some families in that they will have to change the schools that they're attending now. If they're attending a school that's not in the attendance area that, that they live and they're not attending that school for some type of special instructional purpose, uh, they would need to attend the school uh, in their attendance area, which, which is what our policy uh, states. Um, so we do know, I, I think in the preliminary running of that information, we're anticipating that about between 10 and 15% uh, of our uh, 4K through third grade students would need to uh, change the school that they attend. And we realize that for some families that uh, won't be a concern, but we do realize for some families that will be a concern for them. Our, our elementary principals are going to contact every family that's affected uh, by this change and make sure they talk that issue through with them so that they are alert to it and understand uh, why we're moving uh, in that direction as a district. And while it does have a, a, an impact on those 10 to 15% of the students, it also has a very positive impact overall on our students and our district. Uh, both from a instructional standpoint, uh, not missing the class time, uh, the elimination of those, those transfer buses, uh, the safety standpoint uh, and the ability for us to have a much more efficient uh, transportation system by eliminating the transfers and being able to eliminate uh, some of those routes that we currently have in place.
I have a question. Um, so is it, there is no more school choice? Or there's no school choice if you need the busing system? Like what if a family says, I drop my kid off and pick them up every day at East, even though I live on West? I, I, can I stay at East if I don't use buses?
Our, hold on a second. I gotta make sure I'm not muted. All right. Um, our policy 5120 is that the, the, the board directs the, the assignment of students, students to schools within uh, the district are consistent. And that there's, the board shall expect the students within each area to attend the school so designated. Uh, what happens if we allow students who live in one attendance area to attend a school that's in another? It, it creates one of two things. It either unbalances the class sizes uh, at that school or it takes a spot that someone who lives closer to that school could be using. So it creates kind of an inequity. Um, and, and that's the system that we've been living in where uh, if a student requests to attend, if a family requests that a student attends a certain school, it means that the availability of that school is not there for the families that live closer to that school. And to, and to be as equitable as possible and to follow our policy, we want to make sure that whether it's the trans, whether the transportation is provided by the parents or not, that students are attending the school in the attendance area where they live. Unless there's some special instructional program that isn't offered at one of our schools that the student needs.
Um, one of the things that we did discover while we were um, doing all of this research too, um, some multiple subdivisions would have students in that subdivision attending all four of the elementary schools. So a neighbor might be attending West, next door East, the next door Harmony, the next door Consolidated. And so there were um, three different subdivisions that that was happening. And um, 12 Oaks, Oaks out here for sure was the biggest one and they were split in all of, all of those schools. So as we tried to determine these attendance areas, we did try to take subdivisions into consideration so that a neighborhood would all be placed together. So there's not the question game of, I live on the odd side or the even side of the street, where am I going? Um, so we really did look a lot at um, keeping neighborhoods together.
Rich, I just have a quick question um, for AG 5120.4 says resident children who relocate outside the district. So outside the district after the start of the school year, school year may continue their education at their original school. So that would be school choice then, correct?
Yes, if they.
They would automatically, if they wanted to, they would automatically be put in as school choice.
In, in that situation, um, that's students who are, and I'll use an example. If there's a student who's living in the, the Milton West attendance area and, and attending Milton West. Uh, so that, that number four is for students who relocate outside the district. So if they move outside of our school district, they would be able to uh, open enroll and continue their education at the original school for the rest of that year. Uh, but that, that line item in the administrative guidelines is specific to students who um, who move outside of our school district, they can finish that school year uh, at that school.
But they wouldn't be considered open enrollment then?
Yes, because they'd be moving outside of our district. Yep. And I, I think I mentioned it before, but I want to reinforce that um, the policy requires that the board take action on the uh, enrollment areas. So really the, the second memo is the action memo. And it's really, all that the board is approving is the, the attendance areas, which is, are really the boundaries that are set there. Um, it isn't a requirement that the board take action on the administrative guideline. The reason that we brought the administrative guideline to the board is so that we were transparent with the board, that the board was alert to uh, this change that we're putting in place for next year. Uh, it's, it's our initial uh, communication with the community on this topic. And we'll be following up with phone calls to the families who are uh, impacted by the change.
Do we currently have a map like the one presented? Is there any?
Like a, what are?
Ondry map?
We, we have kind of a general map and we have plotted out where the kids live that attended each, each of our schools. So we have a, on a map, we have a dot for each elementary student and it's color coded for each of our schools. And it's, it's pretty glaring that we have kids all over our district that are attending uh, all of our schools. And I think it was mentioned earlier that we even have some neighborhoods where, in a very small neighborhood, we have kids that are going to four different schools. So Marsha, Marsha tracks that every year and can maybe speak a little bit more to uh, the details on that map. But it is something that we, that we track and that we utilize.
So uh, oh, go ahead. I guess my, I understand the need for the, the guidelines and the flexibility based on class size or wherever people have to be living or where growth is. So if there's, if the guideline says, you know, that um, it said, I can't see, that students may be moved to balance class size. So what if they're living in the West attendance area, according to the map, but then they go to East? I'm afraid that, you know, the map might just cause confusion for people? If, I don't, I don't know. Does that, does that make sense?
Um, I'm, I'm.
I think you're saying like.
Question.
If your class sizes, say you have a second grade classroom at West, all these kids are in.
I think, Rick, are you asking that um, so just because I'm yellow doesn't mean I'll always be yellow? Because if that classes are high, I might go to blue. Is that what, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Um, I, the, the purpose for this and the purpose to do this is so that we can stay as close to keeping class sizes um, where they should be as possible. And might there be the, the small percentage of time when it could be yes, but for, you know, 98% of the time for you to look at this and know, oh, if I move here, that's going to be a West location. It's going to cover um, the majority of those cases and there might always.
cases and there might always be a, you know, a small population of something that pops up for that question. But we're hoping that this will decrease those questions and not increase those.
Okay.
And I know that, I think Diamond started to ask a question or 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 share a comment, too. Can we go back to Diamond?
It was clarified. I think I knew, I was kind of on the same board as Rick, as you look at class sizes, if, when you remapped all of these kids, if you have, you know, forty kids that were going to East, but now they're going to go to West and there's not as many kids at West that need to go to East, at what point do you have too many kids at West and not enough at East? And as the communities grow around Consolidated and around Harmony, where do those kids end up? Into East and West?
I think the potential growth in different areas is going to play a big part in what this looks like down the road, our 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 policy details that that I should revisit this every year and if there is a need for changes to those boundaries to bring that back to the board. And and we want to make those changes as infrequently as possible. We want that when a student starts in a school, ideally, we will have them stay at that school. If a big subdivision comes up in one area and we suddenly have maybe a dozen more second graders living very close to one of our schools, we may have to redo that boundary because if they're living close to their schools, we would want them to attend as much as possible the school that they're close to. So it it this isn't something that that we can say, these are going to be our boundaries for the next dozen years and we won't have a need to change them, but we will want to change them as infrequently as possible and only when when we we are required to to make sure we keep that balance in place.
So I think this makes a lot of sense to me. And I get it, you know, if you get a subdivision that, you know, starts growing, you may have to, to Rick's point, every once in a while, somebody in the West may have to go to the East or vice versa. But I I I think this is more of a standardized approach. Makes a lot of sense to me and I would really love to be, I'm really interested in how much this is going to save us because I I really think it's going to save us a lot without those shuttles. So there's that piece in there as well and obviously with the financial situation we're coming up upon, that's that's a pretty, pretty big thing. So I think you guys did a great job and and it, to me, I like this a lot better than, because I I will say that I'm in, Rick and I are both in a subdivision where I know at least, because the kids there go to three different elementary schools, you know, so I always found that confusing.
And just a follow up to Brian's comment, the the financial savings isn't the reason that we went down this path, but but Brian is correct that there's potential for a significant financial savings. And as we're looking at needing to tighten our belt, it it does become a case of weighing this financial savings versus reductions in other places and and where we will be able to make those savings if we didn't make those savings here. So it is a good benefit. It wasn't, it wasn't the direction that we were initially looking at this for, it was more to provide more stability, to to address the transfer buses and the students who are missing school, but it does, it will be a a financial savings for us. I guess I had a comment. Go ahead, Diamond.
And why we're doing it and I I I get it one hundred percent, especially as a board member. And I, as a parent, I liked the idea of school choice because I think every school is awesome, but every school has a different vibe to it. We have three very unique principals that run those schools and they all do a great job. And some of the parents that I've talked to, especially having a little guy that's about to be in the school district here very soon, some parents have really instilled in me that they've they have school choice based on knowing the cultures and how they resonate with their kids differently. So I I can see where some parents might be upset, but I I definitely understand why we're doing it. But that would be something I feel like is probably going to be coming from some of our families.
Well, and that was going to be my comment, too. And I would like to back up a step and just say thanks to to Marcia and Jen and Rich and anyone else that's been working on this. When Rich explained this to me a week ago, from the equity point, it made a complete sense and I think most folks have picked up on that. This is a a good place to aspire to be. When Rich said that they did the numbers and thought about ten to fifteen percent of the kids being affected, I did the quick math and said, okay, there's a thousand kids across four grade levels, so that's a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids. And I I said to Rich, I said, knowing my community, or at least I think I do, I said, holy moly, hang on, if we're going to ask a hundred and fifty kids to change elementary schools. But he he reassured me of the the homework that's been done and the plan that's in place. And, you know, like I said, I wanted to say thanks to the to the folks that have put this together because I I think we can appreciate tonight the amount of work that has gone into coming up with this plan and solving, at least it sounds like it solves a lot of the issues that we had relative to changing buses, missing time in school, keeping track of kids, et cetera. So from that standpoint alone, this is worth doing. The financial thing is obviously a huge thing, too, and we'll be we'll be grateful for that. But for safety, for efficiency, for for just doing what's right by these littlest of our students, this is a a great move in my opinion.
Well, one other piece that I want to mention and then we can move to the the board action portion is that Susan Probst was very involved in her in her supportive students role. And one of the things that she advocated very strongly for is that we make sure that our school counselors and social workers at the start of the school year are ready to provide any support that that students need as they're getting to know some new classmates and 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 being in a new school. So we want to make sure that we are overly planning for how we can provide support so that everything goes smoothly when we implement this this fall.
I would also say, make sure we're providing providing support for those kids that are staying in their school and maybe it's their best friend that just got relocated or their one friend or one of two friends that just got pulled out of maybe their bus buddy or their their lunch friend or they've been in the same class for two years and now they're not. So it's where it's directly impacting ten to fifteen percent, it's indirectly impacting probably more than that as well.
I think that's a good point to remember. On the the action memo, there is a suggested motion to approve the attendance area boundaries as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attendance area boundaries as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion from Brian, seconded by Rick, as you just heard. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion clearly passes. Thank you, folks. And second on new business is customarily our action on the staffing report.
We make a motion to approve the staffing reports as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Mike, to approve the staffing report that you have in front of you. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify of approving the staffing report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The staffing report is approved. Okay, the only other item of business tonight will be a discussion in executive session and then possible come back for possible action if it is appropriate. So bear with me, this is a lengthy dissertation, but I would be looking for a motion to go into executive session subject to state statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C and parent G, to consider employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, conferring legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. And those are all relative to the nineteen or the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty summer school compensation and a specific request from the Milton Education Association.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond. And we will roll call vote that and in clockwise fashion, I will start with myself as yes.
Yes. I will call clockwise.
Clockwise from where I'm sitting, my apology and we're going to assume where you're at, Diamond, so I'll go to Dave next. And Diamond, your second?
Yes.
Is yes, and Rick?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And Brian?
Now it's my turn. Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We are in executive session. So reminder to everyone, close out of the Google Meet and go to the other one, if you would, please.